Welcome to the 2013 Denver School Board Debates presented by A+ Denver. This November voters will make important decisions that will impact kids for the next four years. Hear directly from the candidates about their plans to elevate education on the public agenda.
Good evening and welcome to the final of this year's school board debates for the Denver School Board presented by A+ Denver along with partners Ed News Colorado and Fox 31 Denver. Tonight we are talking to the candidates vying for the District Four seat. That's the seat representing the far northeast of the city of Denver. And our candidates are Roger Kilgore and the incumbent board member Landry Taylor. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, A+ Denver is an advocacy organization with a mission to harness the power of Denver's civic leadership to build public will and advocate for the changes necessary to dramatically increase student achievement and public education in Denver. The first question we're going to ask you is kind of, it's not an opening statement, but it's kind of an opening statement. We want to get your vision for the district, your long-term and maybe short-term vision. So in about two minutes, if you could describe what you would do to accelerate achievement or perhaps change the direction of Denver Public Schools to increase achievement, maybe you could talk about whether or not you think the district is on the right track. We've flipped a coin earlier and Roger, we're going to start with you.
Well, thank you again to our hosts. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I think my long-term vision is that every child in Denver has an opportunity to succeed. I think that's incredibly an important task. And to do that, we need to have excellent schools in every neighborhood and built upon that, schools that specialize in various topic areas that can fulfill the choice process. I think what we need to do though is change the conversation to accelerate our progress. We are doing some things well. We see some modest growth in the overall proficiency levels, but we see some alarming trends as well. We see an increasing achievement gap. We see remediation rates for our kids that get to college that are increasing. And we see problems with our graduation rates. So those are things that we need to change. And too often we are entrenched in, are we going in the right direction or are we not going in the right direction? Do we support the superintendent? Do we not support the superintendent? I'm running because we need to change that conversation to what is working well now and how can we reinforce that? And then what is not working? And I pointed out some of the problem areas, what is not working and how can we change that as well? And if we get out of this either/or situation, I think we're going to be able to make progress much, much more quickly. The other thing I think that we need to do is more fully embrace the community values that DPS has articulated for itself. Students first, equity, collaboration, accountability, and fun. Those are what I would call community values and I think they're very important and very well-stated. But what we've emphasized more recently have been corporate values of competition and lack of accountability, outsourcing, those kinds of things. And I think we need to change that a bit too.
Roger, thank you very much. Landry Taylor, in two minutes or so, your vision for DPS.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. And my vision for DPS is for DPS to be recognized one day as the number one school district in the country. And in order to move us there, we have to make sure that we do four things right today. One of those is to make sure that our English language learners are being educated and addressed on the same level of all of our kids so that we can move them ahead. Number two, we have to make sure that a diploma from Denver Public Schools is the gold standard so that when kids graduate with a diploma from Denver Public Schools, it actually means that they can go career or college-bound and it will be looked at with regard as being students that do not need remediation in reading and writing and math. Number three, we have to eliminate the achievement gap. The achievement gap that exists between our low-income families and higher-income families has to be eliminated. We've talked about it for 40 years during my lifespan. And number four, we must be able to make sure that there are high-performing choices in schools all throughout the district, much like I've been involved in in far northeast Denver where we have high-performing schools in Stapleton and Montbello and Green Valley Ranch. And I need to continue to help and make sure that we as a board, we as a district, we as a community, continue to spread that throughout the whole district.
Achievement gap, Landry. Low-income students in DPS, they've been improving by 1%, 2%.
Not good enough.
What do you do as a board member though to really address that?
Well, first of all, as a board member, you have to make sure that the policies are in place so that great school leaders can follow those policies, can attract great teachers because all learning goes in the classroom. There is no learning down at 900 Grand Street for kids. The learning actually is in the classroom. So we have to make sure that we set the goals, set the guidelines, set the character, set the culture of our school district. And that culture bleeds down, of course, down to the schools themselves. And anytime you're talking about the achievement gap between low-income and higher-income students, it really deals with the fact of how do you make sure that the growth is going to also be taken into account? So we have students today that are growing and they haven't reached that level of proficiency yet, but we have the right things in place. And we know some of the pieces to that puzzle have to do with making sure we have the right school leader in the school. And right school leaders then attract great teachers because all teachers want to work for someone that understands what and how to educate kids.
Are the district's goals the right goals, Roger?
Well, I think the goals of the candidates and the district goals are the right goals in terms of having every child succeed. The difference, I think, and part of the discussion is about how to get there. In fact, I think that's the critical difference. And Mr. Taylor is just talking about basically continuing on the same path that he's been on for the last seven months and the board has been on for the last eight or so years where we have an increasing achievement gap. And that's, Albert Einstein, I think, was the one who said, you know, if you continue to do the same thing and expect a different result, that's the definition of insanity. And I think that's what we're talking about. And I want to reemphasize that we want to embrace the positive things that have been happening, but we need to make some changes and that's clear. And if you talk about the school performance framework, which is that system where we rate our schools, we need to separate out proficiency from the growth part. Because what we're doing is we're setting up a two-tiered standard in our system for places like Green Valley Ranch and Montbello where a blue school can be earned with say 60% proficiency or 50% proficiency. And in Stapleton, that can only be earned with 80% proficiency. So we're saying some kids, it's okay to be 50%, have 50% of them be proficient and in other areas 80% and that's just unacceptable.
Well, let me address that because it's clear that Roger has got this wrong again. If Albert Einstein was a parent, as I was, in northeast Denver, Albert would be applauding what we've been doing in northeast Denver. As a parent, my wife and I understood that when our kids were in elementary and middle school and high school, that the schools were not educating them to the level of proficiency that they should. And because of that, I understand, like many other parents do in northeast Denver or all over the school district, understand that it's great challenges when you're trying to decide the schools that your kids need to go to. And we, my wife and I, did not move out of the district. Our kids were graduated in Denver Public Schools and we stayed in our neighborhood to fight, to make sure that we could turn those schools around, not the status quo, not when my children were in school and going through classes, going through schools where it was not giving them the right proficiency as they attempted to graduate and go to college, which they did very successfully. So that turnaround effort is one that Albert Einstein would be applauding saying the status quo is not good enough. What's been going on, has been going on far too long.
I don't know what Albert Einstein would say about that, but I think you're falling into the problem that we have now where we're either/or. And I think we need to be and plus. And what I mean by that is we need to say, there are things that are going well, but there are things that need to be done better. And every time you kick it back into a discussion of either/or, our children lose.
What would you do to change the Denver Plan right now? What's the biggest change that needs to take place?
Well, the Denver Plan is a high-level document that expresses broad goals like 3%, 3.5% improvement in proficiency rates and things like that. As a document that expresses lofty goals, I think it says a lot of good things. So it's, the implementation is the key issue. And I have already touched on one of the things in terms of how we evaluate our schools and how we communicate that to our parents and our communities. It's not, schools are more complicated than just a color coding. And I think parents need to know what the raw proficiency levels are as well as how those schools are improving as time goes on. That's one thing. Another thing that we need to do a little bit better is providing more respect for and support for our teachers in the classroom. Right now, we're starting to think about them not as being professionals like an engineer or a doctor or a lawyer or a journalist, but as a widget in an education machinery that can be easily switched out. And I think that has reduced motivations in the classroom. And I think that's where it's key to have positive attitudes and high expectations for our students.
I want to move to the subject of school choice. We'll continue to talk about a lot of things we've already touched on.
And the Denver Plan, I'd like to respond to that.
In 30 seconds, your take on the Denver Plan. Now we'll move on.
Thank you, thank you. Well, it may be high-level for Roger to understand, but it's not high-level for the community to understand. When in the Denver Plan you talk about all-day kindergarten, people understand that. When in the Denver Plan you talk about graduating more and more students, people understand that. And when in the Denver Plan you talk about making sure that kids that graduate have a high level of proficiency, the community understands that and I understand that and my kids understand that.
I understand it as well. They're high-level goals and I agree with them.
All right. We're off to a good start. School choice, we're going to turn the page a little bit. Charter schools like DSST, Strive, they're getting great results and they have long waiting lists. Should the district encourage replication of those kinds of schools? Roger, do you want to start?
I think the larger question that that falls into is how do we propagate out successful strategies much more quickly? I think, as I was saying, one of the problems that we've been having is the progress in achievement has been going too slow. And we need to look at, well, two things. One is you look at charter schools and we have some unsuccessful charter schools as well. The Northeast Academy is an example in the northeast that's closing now because of poor performance. But given the popularity of DSST and the success of DSST, I think what we need to look at is the elements of that that are successful, that makes it successful, and then transfer those to our other schools. And we can do that much more quickly and much more effectively to the benefit of many more of our students if we do that now rather than wait for DSST to open more schools. And I think if we want to outsource all of our high school programs, middle school programs to a group like DSST, then we have to ask ourselves, what are the standards for accountability that we're going to be living with moving forward in terms of how our money is spent and what the role of the administration is?
Landry, your thoughts on this?
The answer is yes to your question.
That they should be replicated?
They should be replicated and let's make sure that the public understands this. Charter schools are public schools. Innovation schools are public schools. Magnet schools are public schools. So what we need to do is find those models that are successful and have those models duplicated throughout the whole district, not just in one area. We've been very fortunate in northeast where we have many DSSTs, Strives, University Preps, Green Valley Ranch Elementary School. We have great schools there and we want to continue to duplicate that. We also have challenged schools in our district and we understand the challenges and we know what needs to be done in order to reverse that trend. So one of your questions probably down the line is going to be about intervention. And yes, we as a school district, we as a board have to intervene when kids are not being educated.
I'm going to get to that.
I'll stop right there.
This is an example of, we talk about, let's talk about Manuel High School in our district and let's talk about the DSST that's being introduced there. I think when we go too fast in introducing too many new schools, we set many of our kids up for failure. And with respect to Manuel, I think there's a strong community interest and a strong need for that school to succeed. And what we can be doing, engaged with the community, with parents and with teachers and principals, is if there is interest in science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM that DSST offers, then we need to find ways of incorporating that into a program like Manuel so that it can thrive again. Our mayor is a proud graduate of Manuel High School. He's a bolt. And I think generations of kids after him need to be able to have that pride in our public schools.
We're going to come back to interventions. We're going to talk more about this. I want to ask you about boundaries. You understand boundaries and sort of people, you have a set area within which, you know, if you live here, you can access these schools. Should new boundaries for schools be set up so that students can pass across boundaries of a neighborhood like Stapleton to support better integration, economic and racial integration of these schools? Basically, should the boundaries be loosened and expanded? What do you think?
Well, first of all, I've been one of the co-chairs of looking at that issue with Greater Park Hill and Stapleton. We led a long community process last year where we brought the parents from both Stapleton and Park Hill together to discuss what is their desire. And having that community outreach, you get a chance to listen to not only just the parents, but to staff people talking about, well, what does this mean if this boundary changes? So you actively engage people that understand and can choose what is best for the region because we're talking about a region, a community. And Stapleton, for example, is doing that right now with a community outreach plan where they are looking at three different types of proposals in terms of boundaries. And as we continue from a staff and from a board perspective, continue to listen to that community, we're going to take that proposal that they decide is the best and vote on that next month.
Roger?
The unique aspect of that Stapleton process that Mr. Taylor was talking about is that DPS stepped back. In fact, Stapleton demanded that DPS step back and allow the community to decide what its elementary school boundaries should look like. And I think that's a very positive model of allowing the community to have a role and have a stake and therefore have a commitment to the success of whatever results out of that. The other question that I think was embedded in your original question is, I think all of our schools should be open to neighborhood schools. Our boundary schools, as we often call them, take students that other schools don't take. Or our boundary schools take students that don't have parental background or backing to get them into a charter school that might be across town. I think a reverse question is, should we open up our, all of our schools, our charter schools, for example, DSST? Many of my supporters go to DSST and they live in the DSST Stapleton neighborhood. It's their neighborhood school. That school and other charter schools should have a certain percentage of their spots available so that everybody can walk into the door of every public school in the Denver Public School System.
But the segregation is, I mean, take Smith Elementary and McAuliffe International. There are two schools that are less than a mile apart. They're both neighborhood schools per se. 28% of the Smith students are proficient in writing. 98% of them are also low-income. McAuliffe, on the other hand, 0% low-income and 88% proficient in writing. I mean, these schools are right next to one another. How do you address, why is it that all the higher-income kids are going to one school and all the lower-income kids are going to another school and struggling?
Well, first of all, we have to look at the demographics of the neighborhood. And we know at Stapleton, we have a demographic that is not as diverse as it is across the street at Quebec going down into Park Hill. And Park Hill, by the way, led the integration of great neighborhoods throughout the city and understand that process. So when Mr. Kilgore says that DPS stepped back to listen to the community, that was a step forward. We always listen to the community. At least my experience working with DPS over some 20-plus years, understand that DPS at times did not listen. But my experience, at least for the last five years, DPS has listened. They provided that community outreach component for parents, for community members to engage in and say, this is how we see the future in terms of our diversity picture, in terms of our boundary picture, in terms of the schools that we want in our community. So yes, you're right about the school right down the street from McAuliffe. That school in particular has had the challenges. And being on the Stapleton Foundation Board, which I'm the board chair of, we've been addressing the challenges at that particular school for a number of years, trying to make sure that we find the right, the right formula for a success. Now, what we do have is that many of the parents surrounding that school have supported the changes. We're still not there yet because we know that any school that doesn't have yet the great leader cannot attract the great teachers that can put inside the classrooms the great learning. So we continue to go through that challenge. We think that we are on the right course there at Smith. We know that we're on the right course with McAuliffe and we'll continue that process.
Let me ask you a question. We have, when you talk about those two schools, we do still have a boundary there. McAuliffe, of course, is a middle school that's moving to Park Hill. When we're talking about segregation and we're seeing an increase in segregation because, in part, because of the choice process. And that's not a negative comment or a positive comment, it's just a reality. But obviously, our neighborhoods are segregated and the areas around McAuliffe are very different than the areas around Smith. But we do still have a boundary there between the two. And I think an example of what I mean by the choice process is we have Smiley Middle School, which McAuliffe is moving into the Smiley building when the Smiley Middle School closes at the end of next year. But as that, as the enrollment in that school was going down, many of the white parents were fleeing the school, were able to negotiate the choice process and find better fits for their kids. That increased the concentration of minority students in the Smiley school and that increased the segregation that we're talking about. The solution there is to find good strategies, to have good neighborhood schools and good schools in every neighborhood. That's where we let down Smiley, the district let down Smiley because it had five principals in six years. Mr. Taylor talks about good leadership. I agree, that's critically important. That's not what the district put in place in the case of the Smiley Middle School. The Smiley Middle School faculty, parents, and staff were trying to establish an international baccalaureate program and identified certain types of teachers that were needed to fulfill the requirements for that. District did not fulfill those requirements. And there were other things that contributed to the decline. So I think one of the things that we need to do is hold the administration accountable for its district-run schools. And that's one of the things I'd like to do on the school board, is to make sure we're doing the things to support those schools so that we don't have the incentives that will further segregate our schools.
Now, Mr. Kilgore needs to be corrected on that. It wasn't just white parents that fled Smiley. There were black parents, brown parents, and white parents because parents altogether want the same thing. There's no difference between what a black parent, a brown parent, or a white parent want. They want a great school. They want to be able to educate their child in a great choice with a great school. My wife and I understand that. We are parents. We know what that's like. We know the challenges that parents have. And when the school isn't performing, then parents of every ethnicity is going to look for another option, another change. So to imply that only white parents left is really the wrong picture.
I didn't imply that.
The other thing that has to do with the IB program. Now, one of my good friends was the principal at Smiley. When that IB program was established, a good friend of mine unfortunately was unsuccessful as a leader in implementing that IB program. And that was the cause on what happened there. The district gave great resources at the time and I understand that because that good friend of mine was sitting in my living room. So I understand what was going on there. So it's a matter of having the facts. When you've lived in this district for 33 years, you have a lot of facts, you meet a lot of people, and you understand the stories that maybe Mr. Kilgore didn't have the opportunity to get since he's only been here a short time.
I've been in Denver since 2000. I've been in the same neighborhood since 2000. I've been in the neighborhood of Smiley, which you have not been in. And I don't have any questions about my facts. And I think sometimes my wife and I have fights and she often tries to correct me for things that I say, but I'm not going to cherry pick small items out of what you say. And I would appreciate it if you didn't cherry pick small items out of what I say. When I talk about Smiley, parents leaving, predominantly it changed the racial composition. The facts support that. And I did not say that it was just white parents that left.
I want to move us on. We're going to come back and talk about interventions. Obviously, the far northeast, Montbello, this is sort of what people think about when they think about interventions, closures in Denver schools. Is the strategy at Montbello working? Has that been a success so far? And the second part of this question is, under what circumstances, you know, if yes or no, under what circumstances is it right to close a school? Yeah, you can start.
Go first? Okay, great. Because I was the co-chair of that turnaround situation, not only just at Montbello, but in all of Montbello and Green Valley Ranch. And, you know, you look at the data, we understand it's a mixed bag. What we have is one successful school in, on the campus of Montbello. We have a couple of schools that have had to change. We are looking for a great results from that, just like the great results we're getting from all over the district of Montbello and all over the communities of Montbello and Green Valley Ranch. We know that there are schools that we, and when I say we, it was the community that chose the schools to be there. This was not a district directed that this school would go there. These schools actually came in and set up shop and went out and recruited for parents to look at their models. For instance, like KIP. KIP had to sign up a certain number of students and parents chose KIP. Parents chose DSST. Parents chose collegiate preparatory academy. Parents would chose these schools. So it wasn't that it came from the top-down. These are community people that chose those schools. So we understand the challenges. We know we have challenges still out there to address. But since that turnaround, we've had some great results. We've had some mixed results and we still have some challenges with a few schools that we need to address.
Roger, on Montbello?
Well, I think the far northeast turnaround is obviously a lively point of discussion and I think there's a little bit, I have a little bit different perception of the community's role in that. The community met from April of 2010 through October of 2010. There were about 10 meetings, two all-community meetings, maybe three. I don't recall the exact numbers. And that had two parts of it. There was a community committee that was appointed. A+ Denver facilitated these meetings and they set up a set of principals. At the point of completion of that, the district approved, the Board of Education approved six new schools and changed three principals at that moment. The community had nothing to say about which those six schools were. They were introduced to the community. And then, yes, as Mr. Taylor says, once those schools were there, the community chose which ones that were there that they would be able to attend to. So a very different process, a very different sense of reality. I think it's important for our school board members not to think of themselves as cheerleaders for certain policies of the district, but more to be honest and open with parents about what's going on at Montbello, what's going on in Green Valley Ranch or Knoll Community School. And engage that community in what can be, what can be done to improve those situations. I think being a cheerleader is not the appropriate role for a school board member.
Is there, are there circumstances where you would support a turnaround project like that or a closure?
Absolutely. I mean, at some point, you need to make a change. But I think you need to ask the question for Montbello or for Smiley well before you get to that point. What is it that are the root causes? We have something in the district and in the state actually called Unified Improvement Plan. And that's a process where it's, you are to look at what are the issues? What are the challenges being faced by a school? And what are the root causes of that? And most often, if you look at the root causes, you can then come up with solutions for those root causes. And there's a, there's a set of tools, like longer school day, longer school year, that some of our charter schools have implemented, that we've played out into some of our other schools. More mentoring, smaller class sizes, those kinds of things that we need to do more broadly earlier on so we don't get to a situation where these schools need to be turned around.
Well, first of all, let me make sure that the public does understand this. The process that Mr. Kilgore talked about that began in April of 2010 and lasted through October 2010 was the third process. There were many more processes in 2009, 2008, 2007. I was part of those processes that the community struggled with, what do we do next? And as CEO and president of the Urban League, I took a leadership role because the community asked me to take that leadership role and to be their cheerleader to the district about the changes that needed to be made. So I was a cheerleader. I've only been on the board since March, but I was a cheerleader prior to that for the community who chose me to be that. You talk about community engagement. You talk about parental engagement. That's what the Urban League had been doing since 2009, right there on the Montbello campus so that parents could come up there. And we have many, many parents that are engaged in our center, right there on the Montbello campus for the students, for the parents, and for the community. So we have a little bit more different perspective than what Mr. Kilgore may think it is in that community. I lived there for 23 years. I was president of his neighborhood organization. I was also involved with other community people as we began to change the face of that community.
You guys are doing a great job. This is a lively, very interesting debate.
We don't want it to be boring.
No, it ain't boring. As we get going, I want to, we're a little bit behind because we've had a lot of interesting follow-ups. As we go forward, maybe, let's see if we can speed through a couple of these next issues. Senate Bill 191 ends a practice called forced placement. Teachers placed in schools, most often schools with hard-to-serve populations. Doesn't really matter if the school leader, the principal, signs off on that or not. SB 191 ends that. Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
That was a great thing. That was absolutely a great thing because my kids were in that situation where you had forced placement in the schools, where we had teachers in the classroom that didn't care about the education of those kids in that community. So I supported 191 wholeheartedly because I was tired of seeing that as I would visit those classrooms that my kids attended. And many parents, it wasn't just Landry Taylor and Gloria Taylor that did. Many parents were against this forced placement. And we had asked for years, don't do it to Mont Belo because what would happen is that we became that, that waste zone for teachers that did not want to teach there. And we reversed that thanks to the, the involvement of parents like myself and my wife.
I think the forced placement is not a good model in any way, shape or form. And you think about what we do in the private sector and if, if an arrangement doesn't work between an employee and an employer, then, then there's time to move on. One caveat that I have to that though is that there's so much fluidity in our employment situation in our classrooms, in our buildings, that we often have situations where because of certain budget changes, a teacher has let go, a well-performing teacher has let go because there's no room in the budget. And I think we need to take some responsibility for finding a good fit for those teachers because they are a very important resource and, and they're what's most critical to our kids.
The teachers union is threatening to sue over this, am I right?
Keep in mind, we're talking about the kids in the classroom though and, and what's best for them.
Absolutely.
And, and what's best for them is not forced placement. And forced placement was absolutely wrong any place in the district.
I think we agreed on that. And you mentioned a lawsuit. I think I've read that in the paper, but I don't really know much about it.
Okay. Let's talk about finance. You ready?
Yeah.
School boards responsible, obviously, as you know, for managing the district budget. This year, the approximate budget for DPS is? Anyone know the exact number?
Eight hundred and eleven million.
I have seven hundred and eleven million, but you know, what's a hundred million?
That's a.
That's the general fund. Marguerite Rosa describes the importance of district financial management when she says, how do you, how you deploy public funds is your strategy as a district. Your thoughts on the quote and how, if you're elected, how you would redeploy some of that money to close some of these achievement gaps? Roger?
Well, we need to have as much as possible in the classroom. And in terms of closing the achievement gap or eliminating the achievement gap, the things that I talked about earlier, I think are the kinds of resources that we need to apply. And that'd be smaller class sizes, more, more tutoring opportunities, more mentoring opportunities. Going out and recruiting teachers that look like our students. And that means going outside of the Denver area to colleges and universities that have our teachers of color that we can recruit, that we can, maybe they're not quite ready or maybe they are, but we then bring them in and we provide them with the supports to make them successful. So those are the kinds of resources that I think that need to be applied to our struggling schools.
Landry, on the budget.
Well, Roger may not know this and maybe he does, but we have student-based budgeting now, where our schools get the money, they decide on how they're going to spend that money. Now, with regards to making sure that teachers look like us and principals look like us, I'm not sure where that is, but let me tell you this. I'll give you my ideas on that. The Urban League is the oldest civil rights organization in Denver. And as its president and CEO, I have personally been involved in recruiting teachers of color into this district, spending money and time to do that. But it's nothing that you can do just one time. You have to do it all the time. We go out to historical black colleges, Hispanic leading colleges throughout the United States and continue to talk up the story about what a great opportunity it is to come to Denver where we have more than 60% of our students are students of color. And, and it's great for them to see that opportunity to come and teach in that type of classroom environment.
But what else, but what else other than recruiting different teachers?
Here's two other things. Here's the other things. Yes, exactly. Here's the other thing we need to do. We have a program, in fact, we have two programs. One program is called the Principals Leadership Academy, where we train principals in order to be the great leaders that they need to be. So we've put money into that. The other piece is making sure we have teacher effectiveness development for those teachers so that they can become the teachers that all of us parents want them to be in the classroom because the teaching, the excellence happens in the classroom. So Denver Public Schools has put money into those programs and in fact, because of that, especially in this latest budget, because of that, we've seen such things as better parent engagement with many of our, our schools throughout the district. We've seen principals that are now prepared, that we can recruit and place into schools that need those great leaders. And at the same time, we know that teachers are now in an opportunity or have an opportunity now to get that development that they need in order to become the great masters that many of them want and want to inspire, aspire to.
Let me follow up on the student-based budgeting concept. And we do have student-based budgeting and much of the, the money then follows each of the students, no matter where they go throughout the district or outside of the district for that matter. But we also have a good bit of resources that, that we can use beyond that to help make our schools whole. And one of the things that we need to do a better job of is making sure each school has the necessary resource to offer a full program in the arts, music, physical fitness, world languages, those kinds of things, so that all of our kids can get a good education. And that goes beyond our student-based budgeting.
Do you both support the recent bond in Mill Levy?
That's correct.
You both supported, both of them?
Yes.
And in November, you'll both vote yes on Amendment 66?
Yes, indeed.
That was easy. Do you either, is there any, I mean, any concern about how more resources coming into the district need to be managed or do you, do you think that there are enough safeguards in place?
We need, we need to have ongoing accountability and we need to do a better job with that. I, I worked on the Citizens Planning and Advisory Committee that helped the district formulate the bond and I was very supportive of the, the work that the district did, as well as our, our volunteer committee. I now serve on the bond oversight committee and we're having some good discussions about the way bond money is being spent to reach out to minority and women business enterprises. We've had some productive discussions there. We've had some less productive discussions about money that was intended for this institution here, the Emily Griffith Technical College, which was in the bond. But the district, to its credit, found a way of meeting the needs more well with less money. And so the question then should, should arise is how that bond savings is used. And we haven't had that conversation yet and that's something that I'm continuing to express some concern about. And I think that's important for our taxpayers and our voters and our parents to know that that money is being spent the way it's intended to be and not just arbitrarily.
Landry, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. You both filled out a survey for A-plus Denver, I believe.
That's right.
Based on the recent survey, we have a couple of specific questions for each of you. So we'll ask you each to respond in just about a minute. Roger, I know you didn't answer all the questions that were on the survey directly, but you did provide additional commentary. So maybe you don't like the sort of yes, no statements, but bear with me here. I'm going to ask you whether or not you agree or disagree with the following statements. Teacher should have the right to tenure after three years of effective teaching.
Well, you're right. I don't like yes or no questions because I'm an engineer by training.
But work with me here. We're, I mean, just, if you're gonna, if you're gonna not give me a yes or no, mate, let's, give me a...
I would, my, my full responses are on the website. First of all, we don't have tenure. We have non-provocationary status and I think...
Is non-provocationary status too easy to obtain right now?
Well, we're operating under a new system under Senate Bill 191 where you have to have certain, two years, maybe it's three years of proficient teaching evaluations to, to earn it. I don't think that's necessarily too easy, no.
Okay, agree or disagree. When schools are failing, most of their students' DPS must intervene more quickly and boldly.
If schools are failing, yes. And like I've said, we should be intervening before they get to that point.
Okay, and a couple of statements about school choice. Charter should have equal access to district facilities.
That's a complicated question because, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But, but the way the charter approval goes is that the school board doesn't have complete latitude on, on approving or disproving because the state law has very specific requirements about the basis for charter school approvals or not. If the school board doesn't see the need for a certain charter school because of the, there are plenty of high-quality seats in an area or there's no, no need for any other reason, that's not one of the reasons that the school board can turn down a charter school. So no, I don't think a charter school that the district doesn't necessarily want, but needs to approve under state law, should have equal access to district facilities.
Innovation status should be used for schools that need extra tools to improve student success.
Sure.
Okay. Current enrollment process, working as intended?
I can see some improvements, like I, I mentioned, opening up charter school doors to neighborhood schools.
Would you consider a proposal to allow equal opportunities for students to attend any school in the district?
Say that again?
Would you consider a proposal to allow opportunities for students, no matter where they live, to attend any school in the district?
That's pretty much what we have with the choice process. If there's, if there are seats available, they can.
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I know that's not always fun to say yes or no, but...
No problem.
All right, Landry, on the survey, you said you disagree with the notion that teachers have the right to tenure after three years of effective teaching. Just wondering if you can elaborate on that.
Well, that's one of those questions where you have to make sure that teachers continue to deserve tenure. And I take that back, I take that from going to college where there were many teachers that had, once they gained tenure, began to slack off. They weren't the most effective people in the classroom. And so I've always felt that you should always have any employee, whether it's a teacher or whether it's a professor, that if you're going to give them tenure, that you continue to, to, to test them, to make sure they continue to get and earn that tenure year after year after year. Now, tenure doesn't mean that, so that we have to change that a little bit because tenure means that you can't be fired regardless of how long you will remain in the classroom. That's not fair. By the way, I, I appreciate that. I was the only candidate that actually answered all of the questions on the A-plus survey.
I, I can't verify that, but if that's true, we'll get you like an award or something.
That's true. I'd need an award.
Back to Mont Belo and just the, how contentious that process was. Some of the schools doing well, students in some of the phased-out schools not doing all that well. Let's talk a little bit more about, you know, beyond the process and why that was so contentious. What do we do now? How do we, how do we, you know, right those ships that are sinking and fix that?
There aren't ships sinking, by the way. We have some challenges. But to say contentious is really the wrong branding of what happened there. And, and to point that out, the nonprofit organization Together Colorado was involved in that process and they were challenged that there wasn't a community outreach process that was in place, that they participated in and made sure that parents in those communities were aware of what was going on, attended those meetings. And it wasn't just that April through October time period that they were engaged.
Okay, but let's look ahead.
So looking ahead, because I, your question to look ahead is what?
My question to look ahead is, is when some of the new schools are doing well and some other ones, a little uneven is what I'm saying.
Right, exactly.
So how does the district, how do you as a board member representing that, that part of the city and that school, how do you, you know, how do you redirect things? I mean, what changes need to be made at Mont Belo or on that campus to improve some of the areas in which they're falling short?
They may be falling short in terms of looking at the SPF, but they're not falling short in terms of the growth that students are achieving. And, and I know that because of the Urban League's program in those schools with the mentoring and the tutoring that we do, the after-school programs that we do. We have seen tremendous growth. We know that the parents are engaged in that growth. And only because we receive students that may, may be two to three grades behind, we are seeing the growth and yet they have not achieved that level where they are in that particular class, but we know that they're growing. So we have to recognize that. We know that there's still that challenge of getting them to the proficient level, but we see that they are making progress and we're proud of that progress that's been made. So I take, I take, I take objection to this contentious. The contentiousness that we noticed during that process were not from parents that lived there. These were from people that did not live in the community.
Roger, I'm going to, you can respond to all of, all of that or just, just to the question.
I'll try to, I'll try to stick with your, your question. I mean, there's no doubt that it was contentious. I mean, that's kind of an absurd assertion. And there were people from inside and outside the community that participated on both sides of that discussion. So again, I, I think it's important to speak the truth about the whole picture of things, the good, the bad and the ugly. And your question gets back to that, that there are some very positive things. And if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to be on the school board for District Four, I will work very hard for every single one of those schools in the far northeast to succeed. The ones that are succeeding and the ones that need more help, like the SOAR charter schools are struggling very mightily. And there are no magic bullets. I talked about root causes before and we have to look at what the specific problems are in each of those, each of those schools and then target solutions that center around the same kind of things I've been talking about, smaller class sizes, tutoring, longer school days, more enrichment activities to stop the, the summer slide during the summer. And that's part of what the longer school year does. So there, there are some positive things. And one of the things, things that I think is most positive about the increase in parent engagement. With a new school, as there are so, are so many of them up in the far northeast, that brings excitement. That brings parents in and involved. And, and I think that where you have schools, where you have high degrees of parental engagement, you also see successful students and schools. And I think the efforts that the district is doing now to try to expand that, like we now have 40 schools in the district that have an active teacher program to go out into the community, we need to expand things like that to, to increase that engagement.
Well, we finally found some agreement that the new schools in Mont Belo and Green Valley Ranch is bringing excitement to the community and people are engaged and excited about that. And that's true.
Okay. But this, I mean, and I know that you might differ on how contentious this was, but you know, the far northeast, I mean, is home to some pretty vocal community groups who have strong feelings about these schools. You mentioned one group in particular, but you know, there are folks with, with pretty strong opinions. Do you think that a lot of these outside groups, how vocal these activists are, is that a positive thing or is that sometimes more harmful?
Well, it's the way that they engage in that activity. Now, here's the data. When we began this turnaround process, there were only about, oh, give or take 11,000 students. Today, there's 14,000 students that have enrolled in our far northeast Denver schools. Parents are coming back. Parents were taking their kids to other schools outside of the area. Now, we've given them that opportunity, that choice to bring their kids back in the community in which they live. Now, we all have heard the stories of, of other people that live in that community that said, hey, look, I can't find a school for my child, so I want them to go to George Washington or I want them to go to East. Now, those parents don't have to make that choice. We have great schools there that they can make the choice of saying, we stay, we live, we play and work in this community.
I have two follow-ups on that. One is, at the time of 2010, when the turnaround was taking place, the schools were overcrowded in the far northeast. There was very much a strong overcrowding and that suppressed to a certain extent the amount of enrollment that there could be in the far northeast. The far northeast was growing and the district wasn't keeping up with the, the school capacity issues. And I think now that we've got, we've had the E.V. Dennis Campus that has brought a tremendous amount of new capacity that has allowed the positive influx of, of kids back into that area. The other, well, I'll, I'll stop right there.
Yeah, you have to be aware that 2009, 2008, 2007, that area of Denver had the largest foreclosure rate. It had the largest unemployment rate. Those are indisputable. So it wasn't that the schools were crowded, people were leaving the neighborhood because they were losing their homes. They were unemployed. So he's wrong about the schools being overcrowded. No, people were losing their homes and leaving the community and, and it was a dreadful depression, recession, whatever the government wants to call it, that was happening in that area of Denver, far more than any other area in Denver.
The other comment that I wanted to make was back to your original question about the outside groups. And we have to define what we mean by outside groups.
They were outside.
But I think the, it all starts with the school board and the way the school board behaves. And I think one of the things that I offer as a candidate for the school board is I reach out to people that I disagree with. I reach out to people that I agree with. I'm an engineer by training, so my, my focus is to, to collect data, to understand what people are thinking and to respect their viewpoints, even though they may be different than, than mine. And I think if the school board can begin to use that model more successfully, that will then send a message out to our schools and to our community members about what an will then send a message out to our schools and to our community members about what an appropriate dialogue is. Because I do think we can go much farther and much faster if we have good dialogue, if we have dialogue that's based on a trust that you may have a different opinion than I do, but I do believe that you want the best for our kids. And I don't think that's always there.
Landry, you've been on the board for seven months. What do you make of the, I mean, there does seem to be a lot of polarization on that board. And we talk about these school board elections in terms of slates, right, the reform slate, the union slate. I mean, it seems to be a pretty clear line, you know, four-three divide on that board. Is that the case, or is that, do we make too much of that?
I think we make too much of that. I've been on the board six months. I hope to be on the board seven months.
Longer than that, I guess, right?
Longer than that. We make too much of that. Since I've been on the board, was appointed in March, we have had many votes. And most of those votes have been five-two, six-ones, or six-one and seven-zero votes. So there's been very little disagreement since I've been on the board. Now, maybe prior to March, when I was appointed, there may have existed that, and I don't know what the votes were before then, but since I've been there, my experience with working with board members has been absolutely encouraging and great.
I want to go back to an accountability question, since we have time for it. The LEAP program, the LEAP system that evaluates teacher performance. I know SB 191 is changing teacher evaluation. DPS received a grant this year to change the LEAP program. Talk about the new system and whether you think it's better.
I think there are a lot of positive things with the LEAP program. I think incorporating peer reviewers in a non-threatening way. And I think that's the first principle that I come down on. Any sort of professional development, professional review type of program needs to be positive. It needs to be oriented towards improving, not separating somebody from their job. And I think some of the positive things about LEAP along those lines is to have peer reviewers, to have opportunity for videotaping, to see yourself in the classroom, having clear rubrics or standards of what a teacher is expected to be doing in the classroom. And I think those are all positive things. I think the negatives, or the concerns that I have, is when you're talking about your principal or school leader making observations or peer reviewers, they need to be qualified to make those reviews. And there are training efforts going on to make sure that that is the case as well. And it needs to be done in a non-punitive environment so you can get the most honest information about what could be improved in your teaching style.
You agree with that? What do you think of the changes?
I agree with almost 100% of what he said, but let's keep in mind that this LEAP system was put together by the teachers' union, teachers, and DPS staff. They've been working on it for quite some time. And the presentation that I was fortunate enough to be on the board when they gave this presentation, as all of them were sitting there and cheerleading the system, cheerleading this and saying, it's time to get to work. Let's get it implemented so that if we find areas where we need to tweak it, we're going to tweak it together. So teachers, teachers' union, and DPS staff are all excited about this.
We got a question that was submitted online about co-location, you know, taking space within one school, putting a new, different kind of school in that space, giving parents in that community more choices within that school. What are your thoughts on that concept and how it's played out so far in DPS?
Well, there have been successes and failures. The most glaring failures have been like with Smiley Middle School, where a charter school, serving the same population, the same middle school population, was co-located in that building. Those schools are both closing now. Two problems with that is they were serving the same cohorts of kids, and it was not a voluntary placement. I think when you have that kind of situation, you're leading to failure, and I think the record within DPS is that direction. Another, a different kind of situation is now that the Montbello High School is being closed as we know it, there are multiple schools, DCIS and, well, Noel Community Arts now is going in there, or is in there. Those sharing arrangements were made voluntarily by those schools and those communities, and so I'm hopeful that that will work out in a much more positive way. So it's not an either-or situation.
Landry, co-location?
I'm in favor of co-location. I have a track record of being in favor and implementing co-location. In fact, I was involved in the first co-location of Denver Public Schools with Westerly Creek and Odyssey, a charter school and a district school in the same building there at Stapleton. I understand that when you have co-locations, you have to make sure that both schools have a memorandum of understanding on how the space is going to be used. When you don't have that, then you're not going to have a good partnership that exists, whether it's a co-location of a school or a co-location of a business. So yes, co-location is good. You must have those memorandums of understanding between the two partners to make sure each agrees on how to operate within the confines of the building.
Westerly Creek and Odyssey are now in their own buildings, and we're trying to get out of their co-location as quickly as they could.
No, that's not true. No, no. Odyssey was growing, and so was Westerly Creek. And Odyssey, since I was intimately involved with the Odyssey piece, Odyssey first existed on Stapleton in concourse A. I was in charge of moving them off of Stapleton and then back to Stapleton. They moved off of Stapleton and found a home, or at least I helped them find a home over in the old Match Buff on 19th and Am. And then I helped them move back to Stapleton, as was their choice, and the faculty at Westerly Creek. And we co-authored this memorandum of understanding so that both exist. It was a good partnership. And as Odyssey continued to grow, as you know, there's a waiting list for Odyssey. Maybe Roger doesn't know, there's a waiting list. They needed more space. And the district helped them find additional space, and they moved out of the school.
Thank you both for a lively, very interesting discussion tonight. We're at the point where it's time for you to give your closing statements. So we're going to give you each two minutes again to speak straight to the viewers watching at home and to folks around the community, to tell them why you're the best choice for this District Four seat. And again, we flipped a coin on this. Landry, you'll go first.
Thank you. Well, thank you to our audience, thank you, Eli, for this, and to our audience here in the studio. First of all, I'd like to say that it is my desire, my work that I've been doing for over 20 years, to make sure that Denver Public Schools becomes the number-one school district in the nation. There are a lot of eyes on what we're doing right now, especially with this turnaround. But I think that what I bring to the table is the fact that I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent, my kids went kindergarten through 12th grade in Denver Public Schools. I have attended and been involved and engaged in our PTA meetings, all the student groups, the prom groups, I mean, you name it, my wife and I have been involved in all of those. And we come as parents, understanding the challenges that you, as parents, have when you're trying to make sure that you find the right school for your children. And that is one of the most important decisions that parents have to make. Now, I was appointed in March of this year, and that vetting process was a process that excluded 24 other candidates to narrow it down to me being appointed. I am so happy that that appointment was made. It confirmed that all the work that I've been involved in with the other parents in the far northeast was being heard and listened to by Denver Public Schools. I would love to have your vote, your support, as we continue this effort to make sure that, like I said, the vision that I have is making sure that, number one, we educate all of our English language learners to the proficiency level of all of our kids. Number two, we make sure that that Denver Public School diploma is the gold standard. Number three, that we eliminate the achievement gap that exists between our low-income families and our other income families. And number four, we want to make sure that the choice of high-performance schools is for every neighborhood, every community, any zip code in the city, that parents have that choice that they can make within their own communities to educate their kids. I thank you, I thank you, I thank you.
And we thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Roger Kilgore, in two minutes, your closing statement.
Okay. Well, thank you, Eli, and thank you, Mr. Taylor, for being here. It's always a pleasure to be on the same platform with you. As I said before, my vision is that we have an opportunity for every child to succeed. And to do that, we need to have good schools in every neighborhood. My mother was a school teacher in a one-room schoolhouse, and she gave that up when I was born. And I was a proud product of public education and the first in my family to go to college and graduate. Thirty years ago, with my wife, we started and co-led a camp for summer, a summer camp for kids in inner-city areas. And through that experience, I realized that education is really a social justice issue because for so many of those kids, they had no choice other than the school next to them, around the corner or across the street. They didn't have the family resources to go anywhere else. And I've been working with kids ever since then, and I've served in the district as a volunteer, in the classroom, as a tutor, and on several board-wide or district-wide committees, including the School Improvement and Accountability Council. Now, I believe that for parents, it's an obligation to find the best fit in the Denver Public Schools or elsewhere for their kid. But as a school board member, I feel it's my obligation and the board's obligation and the district's obligation to give you a good choice in your neighborhood so that you don't have to flee the neighborhood if that's what you want. If you want to have that community feeling, that good school in the neighborhood, that safety that's associated with that, that should be a choice that you should have as well. If you choose to go elsewhere, for whatever reason, to match whatever is the best fit for your kid, that's an opportunity you should have, and I fully support as well. I'm asking you for your support because I think we need to change the conversation. It's not an either-or conversation. It's not, are we going in the right direction or not? It's how do we embrace the things that we're doing well? And then how do we eliminate the achievement gap? We don't do it by just continuing to do the same thing. So please join me and help change the school board so that we have an open and free discussion. We have more ideas on the table, and we don't get into the same kind of tired thinking that has created some of these issues for us now. So I thank you for your time and for your attention.
Roger, thank you, and again, thank you to both of you for being here and for putting yourselves out there and taking, I don't know how many hours it is that you've spent on this campaign, but...
Too many.
Anybody who runs for the school board is a saint because we know they don't pay you all that well, so. And we know how important public education is, so thank you to both of you for putting yourselves forward.
Thank you, Eli.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thank you to you at home for watching tonight. This is, again, the final installment of the 2013 School Board Debates, presented, of course, by A+ Denver. And before we go, a special thank you to the crew here at DPS TV and to all the candidates and all their teams who have made these debates so lively and made them possible as well. If you missed any of them, you can watch them online at the A+ Denver YouTube channel. You can go to apusdenver.com for more information on that.